Good evening, everyone. I would like to bring the October 19th, 2022 meeting. The Interboro Board of School Directors to order. Mr. Caldwell, welcome in the red cloak, please.
Mr. Willis?
Here.
Mr. Ryle? Mr. Harris?
Here.
Mr. Goldsboro?
Here.
Ms. Joseph?
Here.
Ms. Fagin? Mr. Evans?
Here.
Mr. Chabon?
Here.
Mr. Phelps?
Here.
Can we have that location? That's pretty good.
Yes, sir.
Heavenly Father, please hear our prayer. Bless all schools, colleges, and especially the University District. And grant this board and to their deliberations and healing the spirit of wisdom, truth, and knowledge. What is undertaken always be done in charity and in peace. And what we do might be for the benefit of others. All this, we ask in your name. Amen. Let's move.
Thank you, Mr. Willis. To the light of the United States of America and to your Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, now.
All righty. Our students got tied up with sports or got delayed. So we're going to move everyone to number three. Recognition.
Ms. Riley? Yes, thank you. So we're very excited tonight to have all of our therapy dogs here with us this evening. This is very exciting. I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Lambert to explain a little bit of the process for all of these amazing animals and their handlers to be trained as therapy dogs. The dogs come into our school quite often. The children love them. The teachers love them. Everybody loves the dogs. I just want to mention that when we were having our vaccination clinics, just to give you an example of how important they are to us, when we were having our vaccination clinics, we did have the dogs at those clinics, especially when the children were receiving their vaccine. And I have to tell you, having the dogs there, especially for children who had maybe hadn't had a shot in quite a while, they really made a difference and really helped calm the children down and help that process go so much easier. So they really have impacted our lives on a day-to-day basis here at school as well as at home. So Rachel, I'm going to turn it over you. And we do have something as a token of our appreciation for all the time that you've put into training the dogs and bringing them into our school and letting the children have an opportunity to get to know them. So, Rachel.
Thank you. Five years ago, and it seems like it's been longer, but five years ago, the board graciously allowed therapy dogs to enter into Interboro School District. And I will say, with that system in place and with the therapy dogs, I will say, Estelle County Schools, we are a front-runner in that respect. The therapy dogs have grown, as you have seen, and we are happy for that. Sadly, we have lost two therapy dogs since our origination date. And one of them will be donating a buddy bench to the school. So that dog will, and his memory, will continue to live on. So we have dogs represented in the kindergarten, the administration building, Prospect, Glen Olden, the high school. Norwood had a dog. It has now transitioned to Prospect Park. I'm sorry. And Daisy does go to Norwood and to Prospect. So we are looking for a dog at Tencum if anybody is willing to volunteer. So we are very excited for our dogs today. I'll just give you a snippet. We ask every year how things are going. And one teacher has reported that it was mentioned from their parent that all of a sudden their child was very eager to come to school. It used to be a fight in the morning. It used to be, I don't want to go to school. And then all of a sudden, their child would wake up and say, I'm going to school today. And the reason was the dog. And so we don't know the immediate impact that a child has with a dog, but we know as soon as the child goes to school that they ask for the dog. And so that's what we are very excited for. Our dogs are present in the classrooms, the hallways, through therapy sessions, and as Mrs. Riley mentioned, at outside activities as well. And a little off source of that, our Life Skills Classroom at the high school is now making dog treats, which you will all get tonight. But that is just a continuation of the therapy dog program through that. All of our dogs are insured through Alliance Therapy Dogs. All of our dogs go through rigorous training. They have to have three onsite visitations with a trainer as well as a temperament test. So there would be no way that we could have 10 dogs in one room if they did not pass rigorous tests. So I also need to say, the handlers, I don't think that people understand how much of a commitment it is. But when the dogs and the handlers go to work every day, it's definitely an extra commitment. The dogs are exhausted by the end of the day, and I know the handlers are too. So we really appreciate all of you making the commitment on a daily, sometimes weekly, even monthly, or even whatever basis you make it on. We do appreciate it because we know it's an absolute extra commitment to you. So thank you so much for that.
All right. You want to announce them? And we have a gift.
All right. So Jo, Ms. Mullin, Joanne Mullin, and Kerrigan, if you could please come on up.
So everyone is getting this poster. They give Marge credit for this. It says Kerrigan, "Therapy Dogs Make a Positive Impact." So everybody's getting one of these. So you can have them at home, have them in your school. Joanne, thank you. Got everything. Thank you, Kerrigan.
Start with the front row, though. Come on, baby.
That's fine. We'll skip her way in.
Patty O'Shea and Daisy?
Thank you.
All right. Lori Laudergen and Casey? Keely and Kona? Sharon Matthews and Gigi? Corey Lightremus and Nala?
There we go. Nala's definitely hanging out here. Thank you. You got me. What about your treat? Nala, you're spoiled.
Holly Curran and Maggie?
You all right going around?
Jen Oliveri and Reno? Come on, Reno.
Got it?
Yep. Come on, we're going this way. And Matt Larson and Daisy?
All right, there you go. You're welcome.
And none here tonight is Wendy King and Crosby and Jess Lennox and Molly. So thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you for being here. Take the rest of the meeting. You'd like to head out. Thank you. Good to hear you. Rachel, thank you so much.
Thank you. Ms. Riley said that Interboro was moving to the north.
Come on, to the dogs. Score these calls. They are great.
Orange trees. Yes.
Everything okay?
Yeah.
How'd you guys do?
Hi, Daisy.
Hi, Daisy.
Quite a committee. Where are you?
I would just, before we move on, I hope to thank Ms. Lambert, that we approved this. This was definitely her baby, her idea, having her two of those in school history. Can't wait to see the dogs.
Therapy dogs.
Therapy dogs.
We're going to back up here and go back to number two. One of our studio reps, Mrs. Escara?
Scariere.
I'll get it before you enter. Yes, before she grabs it. Do you need to remove the fork?
Okay. At the Kindergarten Academy, the children are settling in nicely with their routines of the day and are enjoying being introduced to both the pre-K and kindergarten curriculums. The children have the loving music, STEM, and PE classes, and the children are engaged and they're learning and having a good time doing it. We rolled out our PBIS program. Students have been learning what it means to be respectful, responsible, and safe at the Kindergarten Academy. At Glen Olden School, September was a busy month. On Thursday, September 22nd, we held Buck Pride Spirit Day. The kids and staff demonstrated the most unique ways on how to come to school dressed in school colors. Student Council held our Back to School BBQ on Friday, September 30th. This was a great event for students to celebrate after a few weeks of September testing. Families had a great time dancing to music, eating, and socializing with staff members. The weather managed to hold off for us, and we were grateful. We closed out the month of September honoring our students of the month recipients who demonstrate the virtue of courage on a daily basis. The students were recognized during announcements and then received a prize for their accomplishments. Glen Olden kicked off the month of October, bringing luck to the Phillies. On Friday, October 7th, students and staff were invited to wear their best Phillies gear to school to show their team spirit. We may have been busy with academics and fun events, but our building also received some redecorating. A huge thank you to our home and school for purchasing our PBIS Core Values banners for our lobby, along with colored grade-level flags for every classroom.
At Norwood School, our Back to School Night was a great success. We had several families come out and meet the teachers and Dr. Esposito. Home and School started selling popcorn again on Wednesdays. Everyone is very happy our popcorn's back. Our Life Skills students are selling pretzels on Thursdays every week. They are also starting up the coffee cart on Fridays. The staff is extremely happy that that is starting again. Our Fall Pictures were on Wednesday, October 5th. Our students and staff look extra special that day. Our eighth-grade class sold moms as a fundraiser, and it was a success. The moms were beautiful.
At Prospect Park School, Prospect Park had a busy September welcoming our students back into the building from summer. We started the year off with a student and staff wellness calendar that focused on reconnecting and setting clear expectations for a great year. We have been celebrating our perfect planner winters weekly for our PBIS program in the middle school. We had our first school-wide dress-up day to celebrate National Video Gaming Day. It was fun to see staff and students wearing their video game apparel. We had a great turnout for Back to School Night and enjoyed inviting our community back into our buildings. It was a night full of reconnecting and building lasting relationships that will foster a great school year and partnership between home and school. We look forward to what October will bring at Prospect Park School.
At Tencum, on September 6th, we welcome back our students and staff for the 2022-2023 school year. We are striving for a great year with a great community. We would like to thank our custodians for the hard work that they did to make our school ready for the school year. This year, we'll have many new faces here at Tencum. Lauren Love, Assistant Principal; Caroline Pomino, Guidance Counselor; Adrian Delaney, Speech Therapist; Catherine Carroll, Social Worker; Cassie Rosenfeld, Long-Term Music Sub; Allison Price, Second Grade Teacher; and Amanda Miller is our new Special Ed Teacher, and our own Taylor Burkhart is also a new Special Ed Teacher. Taylor is a graduate of Interboro High School and Wyandotte University. Welcome to the Tencum family. Tencum's Back to School Night was held on September 28th. We had a great showing from our parents and guardians who get information from some community groups as well as our teachers. The night was a huge success for everyone who attended. The year's Fall Picture Day was held on September 30th with a picture retake day of November 11th. Making a comeback this year was the staff picture and the class pictures, which made everybody happy to be back together.
At Interboro High School, we held our first Back to School Night in person on September 29th, and it was a big success. We had a lot of parents that came out to meet their students' teachers. This was a great beginning to the school year. For college visits, Guidance Department helped us have colleges and universities come back in to talk to students in person. It's great seeing the students interacting with these representatives. Also, on October 12th, we had administered the SATs at the high school for any senior who had signed up. All 11th graders reported to school that day for the PSATs. The 9th and 10th graders came to school later and had assemblies from the DCIU and SMART features. All in all, everything seemed to go well. At this year's Fall Festival, we were with our Life Skills, Life Skills students, and it was held on Friday, October 14th. Ridley High School joined us this year. Some of the activities that we did were pumpkin painting, basketball shot, newcomb, hand jam, bardo, ladder ball, mini golf, soccer shot, bounce pass, hayride, petting zoo, and base skating. A big shout-out to Katie Garben and Ari Newgan for planning this event. For our Homecoming this year, Homecoming will be October 21st at 7:00 p.m. at the Sports Complex. The Homecoming Dance is October 22nd at the high school where the king and queen will be announced. Also, on September 27th, there was a new student lunch that held in the library to welcome new students to IHS. On September 28th, there was an ice cream social after school for all staff members, which was sponsored by Student Council. And that concludes my report.
All righty. Ms. Receiver joined us to celebrate this. Thank you both. Moving on now to number four, Ms. Rose.
PSB's, Pennsylvania School Board Association's Honor Roll of School Board Service Program recognizes school board directors for service and dedication to their local districts and communities. Through the presentation of honor roll awards, we are able to show appreciation for school directors' efforts and commitment to public education as well as their students and schools. When school directors reach eight years of service, they are presented with an honor roll certificate. Tonight, we'd like to honor Mr. Ed Harris.
Should I say something? This is my last year. No. Thank you. I appreciate that. It's a lot of work and it's a lot of fun to accommodate. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. All righty. Moving on, do we have any other comments, Mr. Harris?
No, sir, we do not.
All right. Moving on to number five.
Motion 5.1, the following minutes of the regular meeting in the Interboro Board of School Directors held as September 21st, 2022.
Second. Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed. Motion carries seven zero. We are now here from our solicitor, Mr. Huppi.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, everyone, members of the board, members of the public. My office this month generally worked on some of the average things, special education work, some tax assessment appeals, two of which are on the agenda and which my partner, Mr. Angelus, was here on Monday evening to discuss with the board, and then some general contractual matters. That would conclude my report. Thank you, Mr. Huppi.
Moving on to number seven.
Motion 7.1, that the treasurer's report for the month ending September 30th, 2022, be approved.
Second. Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed. Motion carries seven zero. Next up, Mr. Harris.
Motion 7.2, that funds dispersment in the amount of $8,902,829.39 be approved.
Second. Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed. Motion carries seven zero. Number eight. We have no correspondence, correct, Mr. Harris?
Correct, sir.
All right. Moving on to number nine. 9.1, Mr. Willis, let's see.
Yes, the Legislative Committee met last week. Right now, as everyone knows, we're in the final weeks of the election cycle, so there's not a lot going on in Harrisburg. There's a few things that is still on the agenda. House Bill 1813 is a bill that will allow active-duty military to access early enrollment without establishing residency. That should be coming up in the next couple of weeks. Senate Bill 1243, Financial Literacy, is currently stalled in the Senate, but there are signs that it's going to start moving. The NFLMV set back this bill. However, PSBA does not support it at this time because our platform, the PSBA platform, does not support adding any graduation requirements. So that one's kind of stalled right now. The House Education Committee on Thursday voted unanimously to approve Senate Bill 869 that still needs approval by the full House before being presented to the governor for signature. And Charter Reform Update, right now, there are 436 out of 500 school districts are signed on to the Charter Reform in Interboro as well.
Thank you, Mr. Willis. Moving on to 9.2, Delaware County Community College, Mr. Goldsboro?
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. On October 12th, there was a sponsoring school district annual dinner appreciation in which myself and Mr. Chabon and, and Mrs. Riley, thank you. I'm so used to calling her Bernadette. I couldn't get it all from top to top. Mr. Riley, we all attended. Food was delicious, as it usually is, and there was a very nice presentation that was there. I have the PowerPoint slides, which I have forwarded to all of the school board and to, and to Mrs. Riley, obviously. And, and, oh my gosh, I'm blacking. Yeah, it doesn't matter. It's, yeah, that's right. I'm not watching the Phillies game, actually. Anyway, so, anyway, it was very nice, that little presentation there, talked about the Prendergast Building in Upper Darby and what they're doing there, along with a number of other opportunities that they have. They gave some updates on current enrollments. And they were also looking at some of the things that they're offering now, some academic pathways, which are possible alternatives to students that are looking to go into the technical school but could actually go to Delaware County Community College and get some credits that way. They also talked about some of the things that are being offered where some teachers within high schools are getting accredited to actually offer college credit being taught within the high school. And I gave an example of Marble Newtown High School, 113 students in five sections of English composition, and they're actually getting college credit there. So some interesting things that are going on at Delaware County Community College. They were going to be having an opportunity for guidance counselors to come in and be kind of shown some of the different things that are being offered. Most of them are aware, but kind of giving them a little bit more of what's going on at Delaware County Community College. They're really, really offering a lot of different things. And so got a chance to do that after the meeting, when Mr. Chabon and Mrs. Riley laughed that I had to go to a meeting after that. Then we decided that we're going to be having a couple more meetings, one later on this fall and one in the winter, just kind of getting an update on what things are going on. The current president of the Delaware County Community College is going to be retiring at the end of the year, so there's a surge on for her and also for another trustee. And I just got an email today from Delaware County Community Office, Community College, their office, and, and in that email, I'm just bringing it up now, they were informed by the Pennsylvania Department of Education that the $66.5 million project that's going to be taking place in Upper Darby, in the old Prendergast Building, state funding will be funding approximately 50% of the annual cost, the annual expenses. So a huge commitment by the state of Pennsylvania and Department of Education, and I think it's going to be a real, real benefit to Delaware County. So that concludes my report.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Goldsboro. Moving on to 9.3, Delaware County Intermediate Unit, Mr. Harris.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Where's the dogs? The Delaware County Intermediate Unit Board of Directors met on October 5th, 2020. Approved receipt for the school district's Annual Title I and Title II Non-Public allocations for DCIU to provide training, coaching, staffing, and professional development services based on contract that runs through July 2020 to September 2023. Approved request for the following school districts to be entered into a member random of understanding with the DCIU to form a Title III consortium from July 1st, 2020 to September 30th, 2023. Schools are Chichester, Garnavalle, Havreford Township, Interboro, Pendelco, Ruby, Rosetree Media, Southeast, Southwest, Beatership Academy, Visions Academy, and Wallford Slaphmore. Approved contract with the school district of Havreford Township for the DCI to provide Wilson Reading Program-level tutors from September 6th, 2020 to June, September 6th, 2020 to June 30th, 2023. Approved contract with the Norris Town Area School District to provide the DCI Title I for medial parent involvement services. And a good stop. Approved contract for four adults, 24 students, to attend a Greater North New York Dental Conference at the Jacob Center in New York State. That sounds fun. On November 98th, 2020, to prepare the students for their final projects and expose them to new technologies, dental equipment, and supplies. Also, approved for up to nine adults and up to 40 students to attend Skills USA Pennsylvania Competition and Conference in Persia from April 12th, 2023 to April 14th, 2023. Approved the appointment of Ryan Wilson as the DCI's new supervisor of pupil service effective on November 29th, 2020. The next board director meeting is November 2nd, 2020 at 6:45 a.m. Morton, that's us all.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Moving on to 9.4, Capital Improvement Committee, Mr. Harris.
The Capital Improvement Committee met virtually on Tuesday, September 27th. We were providing an update on the Glen Olden admin project as well as an update on the high school. According to DWE Engineering and Architects, the design team met to coordinate the various disciplines. They were finalizing the RFP. A walkthrough was done first early in the morning by the board of the project, and then various contractors with Mr. Galloway walked through the project so that they could provide proposals due October 20th. And then after the proposals are provided, will certainly come with a bunch of questions. They have a period of two to three weeks to have those questions answered, and we expect a soft target start date of late December, early January for the admin project at Glen Olden. As far as the high school, at Back to School Night, KCBA Architects and DWE Engineering representatives were there again, and they provided a presentation on the high school project for any of the parents who wanted to sit down and tour and just watch it, as well as a virtual tour, virtual three-dimensional tour out in the, that showed you the various classrooms, the learning steps, how the cafeteria was going to look. All architectural, like three-dimensional rendering, but I think a lot of parents really appreciated that kind of a look at what the project was going to be. That's on schedule to go out for bid by the end of the year. We'll continue holding biweekly meetings, or at least DWE and the Architects will continue holding biweekly meetings. We'll continue to hold our monthly meetings. And then the next thing that's up on that is the Act 34 requirement. The state requires any project with an addition with a certain size footprint to have a hold in an Act 34 hearing, at which communities invited will have an opportunity, I think 30 days, to provide comment. And that meeting will be held November 10th in this boardroom. And that's all we have for you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris.
Sure.
At this time, our student reps can be excused. Thank you both, ladies.
Thanks for coming. Congratulations on that.
From the office personnel, motion that the following personnel actions be approved, starting with 10.1 on page two going to 10.7 on page six.
Second.
Movements have been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Movements carry seven zero. Next up, Mr. Harris.
Under number 11, Retirement, motion with regret that the following retirements be approved. Margaret Ruda, Bus Monitor with Transportation with eight years of service to the district, be approved for retirement effective October 28th, 2022. And 11.2, Edna Bartholomew, Van Driver with Transportation with 14 years of service to the district, be approved for retirement effective November 21st, 2022.
Second.
Movements have been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Myself, I would just like to thank both of these people for their service to the district. We, as always, we do appreciate it. There are no other comments. Everyone in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Movements carry seven zero. Next up, Mr. Harris.
From the Office of Curriculum and Instruction, motions that the following items be approved, 12.1 to 12.3 on page seven.
Second.
Movements have been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Movements carry seven zero. Next up, Mr. Harris.
From the Office of Special Education, Pupil Services, motions that following items be approved, motions 13.1 to 13.5.
Second.
Movements have been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Movements carry seven zero. Next up, Mr. Harris.
From the Office of Technology, motion that following items be approved, 14.1 to 14.8 on page eight.
Second.
Movements have been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Movements carry seven zero. Next up, Mr. Harris.
From the Office of Finance, motion that following items be approved, 15.1 to 15.3.
Second.
Movements have been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Myself, I would like to thank Mr. Pupio's office, the, the tax appeals that are rolling in is an ongoing job. And I know you guys work diligently and try and hold them back, so we do appreciate it. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Movements carry seven zero. Next motion, Mr. Harris.
Motion 16, that the board of school directors approve the facility license agreement with Wyndham University for use of the university pool for the high school swim team 2022-2023 season at a cost of $28,000 to be paid from district funds.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries seven zero. Next up, Mr. Harris.
Motion 17, that board of school directors approve the Delaware County Intermediate Unit Title III Consortium Memorandum of Understanding for the 2022-2023 school year.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries seven zero. Next motion, Mr. Harris.
Motion 18, that the board of school directors approve the purchase of a 2015 Micro Bird 23-passenger bus and a 2016 Blue Bird Vision 48-passenger bus from Brightville Body Works in the amount of $100,800 to be paid from district funds.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? I'd like to thank Mr. Galloway from the board. I know this is probably above and beyond your job description, but as usual, you always take the bull bottom once, and we appreciate you getting this done. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries seven zero. Next motion, Mr. Harris.
Motion 19, that board of school directors approve Vernon Ed Riley, Valerie Edman, Mark Abbott, and Rebecca Angley to attend the 2023 PDE Data Summit from March 27th to March 29th, 2023, in Hershey PA, at a cost not to exceed $3,500 to be paid from district funds.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries seven zero. Next motion, Mr. Harris.
Motion 20, that the board of school directors approve the revision of the following policy in the category of operations, 808 Food Services.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries seven zero. Next up, Mr. Harris.
Motion 21 is a roll call motion, that the board of school directors approve the Interboro Virtual Academy Memorandum of Understanding between the Interboro School District and the Interboro Education Association under the collective bargaining agreement effective July 1st, 2022 to June 30th, 2025.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. Ms. Caldwell, we have a roll call on this one.
Mr. Willis?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Goldsboro?
Yes.
Ms. Joseph?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Shabon?
Yes.
Mr. Phelps?
Yes. Motion carries seven zero. Next motion, Mr. Harris.
Motion 22 is also a roll call motion, to approve the Confidential Secretary's Compensation Plan effective July 1st, 2022 to June 30th, 2027.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. Ms. Caldwell, we have a roll call on this one.
Mr. Willis?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Goldsboro?
Yes.
Ms. Joseph?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Shabon?
Yes.
Mr. Phelps?
Yes. Motion carries seven zero. Next motion, Mr. Harris.
Motion 23 is also a roll call motion, be it resolved that the board of school directors of the Interboro School District intend to proceed with renovations and additions, both educationally and physically, at an Act 34 maximum building construction cost of $13,085,150 and maximum project cost of $79,740,381. Be it further resolved that the board, that the Interboro School District will conduct an Act 34 hearing at the Interboro School District Administration Building, 900 Washington Avenue, Prospect Park, VA 19076, on Thursday, November 10th, 2022, at 6:30 PM prevailing time for the purpose of reviewing all relevant matters relating to the planning, designing, constructing, furnishing, and equipping of an upgraded Interboro High School, and the hearing will be duly advertised in accordance with school code.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. Ms. Caldwell, we have a roll call on this, please.
Mr. Willis?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Goldsboro?
Yes.
Ms. Joseph?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Shabon?
Yes.
Mr. Phelps?
Yes. Motion carries seven zero. Okay, do we have any other business to address? Hearing none. We're now hearing from our superintendent, Mr. Riley.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Two items this evening. Uh, today, the 2022 Hall of Fame recipients were inducted into the Interboro Hall of Fame. New inductees are Michael T. Mullin, class of 1997, Lou Garrison, class of 1970, an Interboro High School teacher, Steve Selfridge, class of 1996, Robert Martin, community member, John Kalin, community member and former board representative from Glen Olden, and Dave Heine, Interboro High School math teacher. Uh, each of these honorees or family representatives share their professional and personal success stories and how being a part of the Interboro School District played a significant role in their accomplishments. Uh, I would highly recommend that parents, students, and staff take a few minutes to visit the community page of our website. I don't believe it's updated just yet, but it will be, to read more about these honorees and all of the Hall of Fame recipients. Uh, I would like to thank the Interboro alumni and the Hall of Fame Committee for the time that they dedicate to supporting the district and continuing the Hall of Fame tradition. Uh, I would also like to take an opportunity to thank some of our custodian and maintenance staff for parents and our staff and administrators who have visited the buildings. Over the last couple of years, our gymnasiums have really been used for storage during the pandemic. And this was the first year that we've had an opportunity to refinish and recode the floors. Um, and under the guidance of Mr. Galloway with our custodial team, we were able to complete that in-house at a significantly reduced cost. So all of our gym floors have been redone. They look beautiful. And I just want to thank the team members that have participated. This was five straight weeks of floor refinishing, actually six, six weeks. Um, so Corey Lavancher, Yvonne Blair, Steve Cutting, Steve Langendorf, Patrick Day, Sergey and Olga Useviak, Caitlin Blair, Steve Giorgio, and Stephen Tuttle. So as a team, they worked and completed this project. So I'd like to thank them on behalf of the board and administration.
Do we have any comments from any board members?
Yes, real quick. Uh, the end of the month, there's lots of activities that are taking place at a lot of the community schools and also at the high schools. So, you know, make sure you go onto the website and, and of the different schools and get a chance to see all the different activities that are being offered over the next, uh, over the next month. There are a lot of different things that are happening, both during the weekend and on the weekends.
Thank you, Mr. Goldsboro. Mr. Harris, thank you for reading these long motions. We appreciate it.
I hope everybody understands what we're voting on.
All right. Please visit the Interboro School District website at wwwinterborostdoutboard for further information on the meetings listed below. On Monday, November 7th, 2022, a finance committee meeting with a GBO meeting, medially found, will be held virtually at 7:00 PM. The next work session of the Interboro Board of School Directors will be held virtually on Monday, November 14th, 2022, at 7:00 PM. The next regularly monthly public meeting of the Interboro Board of School Directors will be held at the Administration Building on Thursday, November 17th, 2022, at 7:00 PM. Thank you all for coming. The meeting is adjourned.